Two thousand twenty-three Culver Town Council meeting to order. Before we get started, as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded, and your participation is your permission to be recorded and appear on the town's YouTube channel. Also, if you have a cellphone, please either put it on mute or turn it off. Roll call, please.
Jim Clevenger?
Present.
Joe Githens?
Here.
Bill Ham?
Here.
Sally Retardi?
Here.
Rich West.
All stand, please, for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, as do the Republic of Washington, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nice to see a full crowd. Annette? Am I pronouncing your name correctly? Haney?
You are.
All right, Marshall County Tobacco Education Coordinator. What a title.
Oh, and it goes on. I'm the tobacco education coordinator for Marshall County with St. Joseph's system, so it just keeps going. I am here today to say thank you. For one, is I took a walk through your park and put the no smoking signs. I appreciate that. I only saw one cigarette butt as I'm walking through because I'm the cigarette butt queen that looks through everything. It's clean, and it's nice, and it's very, very appreciated by me and I'm sure the residents of Culver. The only issue I have is your policy. The policy and ordinance was done back in two thousand and twelve. Great, beautiful. But since then, times have changed just a tad. The thing is, we have e-cigarettes now. Very, very popular. And it's not written in your policy. I would just like to recommend that you update your policy to the times of today and add in here that, but not limited to cigarettes, cigars, pipes, and smokeless tobacco, but also the e-cigarettes in here, just because one out of four high school students are using them currently. And there's, you do have some places in Culver, unfortunately, that do sell vapes. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Your signs look lovely. I brought my sign that Plymouth just passed a policy down at their parks, and we did have the vaping, the cigarettes, and also marijuana. But these are the signs that the Plymouth Parks is putting up. I love your signs along the fence line with the beach. They're beautiful. But I didn't know if you would want something like this in a couple other places that you have down there. You could have the Parks logo and then the Marshall County Breathe Easy logo. It's up to you. I would pay for these. It would come out of my tobacco fund, grant fund from the state of Indiana. So if you're interested in something like that, I would appreciate it. But also, I do have a copy of the ordinance if you'd like to see it, like back in two thousand and twelve. And you don't need second page, then. Thanks.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Huh? You made coffee.
I did. I did. I did. I came prepared. Thank you. So that is my request tonight, is just to update your policy back from August fourteenth of two thousand and twelve, just to update it a little bit. That would be a problem or not? Any questions for me regarding this?
Yeah. Does the school system have an anti-vaping policy?
They have a no smoking, also vaping policy within the school systems. There are also smoke-free properties, so no one can smoke on those properties at all. But I have gone into Culver High School and spoke to classes in there. We, I teach a class that I can go in and teach kids about vaping and the effects of it and the bad health issues that are going on with it. But COVID really took a toll on our kids. When they were home isolating all the time, they were escaping. They escaped to phones, computers, and they picked up the vaping. And like I said, you do have a couple places in town that do sell vapes, unfortunately. And, and sometimes excise doesn't get there in times where it's divided up.
Thank you.
Move on.
Jim, I can tell you that the school does have a vaping policy, and I know that on the baseball team, the community school baseball team, you're caught vaping. Right now, it's a third of the year suspension, so you can't play in the ballgames. And right now, Mike has five students who can't play the first third of the season.
Which? Which brings me to the point, Bill. What about our library? That you appointed with the library.
Thank you. I'll have to, I'll have to check with our library back here. Thank you.
Thought to see it goes smoke-free property if it's not.
It's, well, it, no, it is a smoke-free property, but I don't know that we have a sign about vaping. That's, and I think that's Jim's question.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I'm sure we have a no smoking policy.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yes, we have that, but I don't know if we have any posted no vaping. We have that ordinance, unpolicy.
And vaping is very, very popular.
Right, no, I understand.
Making it the kids, so that's why I'm just bringing it to your attention.
No sweat. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Annette.
You're welcome. If you do update it, would you please let me know?
Certainly will.
Thank you.
We'll have to amend the ordinance, but we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh six. Ordinance to rezone four fifteen East Lake Shore Drive from commercial C two to planned unit development P U D. Who wishes to speak?
I do.
Identify yourself, please.
I will. David Barker, Barker Law Offices, six fifty North Range Line Road, Carmon, Indiana four six oh three two. Represent Marar Custom Homes and the owners of Marar Custom Homes, Dean Jones, and Sarah Jones, who are both here this evening and available to answer questions as well. Obviously, we're here after attending the rezoning pills, obtaining variances that we worked with the town that felt we needed for this property. Those were accomplished, then went on to the Plan Commission and got a unanimous vote from the Town Council to get approved, the final plat and the rezone from C two to P U D. I presented to President Clevenger, members of Town Council, a statement of character intended to develop a planned unit development that's been given ahead of time. I've provided an order reversing Culver Plan Commission recommendation. Provided March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, variances granted by the Culver Board of Zoning Appeals on a five oh vote to reduce the side yard setback and the front yard setback and the rear yard setback. I provided a March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three Plan Commission approval and positive recommendation to the Town Council. I've also provided for the background warranty deed showing that there are no deed restrictions or environmental matters or concerns of record because that had been brought up through the B Z A and through the Plan Commission. I also provided a lot of late night reading and soil warning, warnings conducted by Alton Whizzy that also supported the residential development at this site. I also provided a thirty-year title search dated March twenty twenty-three for the real estate without any found environmental restrictions or records, environmental cleanup orders, and/or pending environmental investigation. I provided written supporters of the rezone application, total twenty-seven. Most importantly, I provided a letter from Terry Wakefield, Chief of the Culver Fire Department, in support of the rezone application as to fire and safety access. I provided a letter from Bob Porter, Utility Manager for the talent Culver, in support of the rezone application as to handicap parking space on Lake Shore Drive, being in addition to the parking spaces on the actual parcel. Provided relevant photos of the past site, which you guys are well versed in. I provided active local real estate listings showing that these prices for the condominium units are well in excess of the surrounding areas, and that was an issue. I also provided, lastly, a copy of a previous variance that Jeffrey and Kathy Mansfield received that are adjacent to this parcel for each rear yard setback and north side yard setback that had no other variances required, even though they had, did not meet the minimum square footage or the minimum width. And the town had previously not required those variances. So that's something, if you open this up for public hearing, you're gonna hear again tonight. We've gone over it in the B Z A. We've gone over ad nauseam in the Plan Commission. And I don't want to bore you, but I'm certainly here for questions. We've had previous litigation on this case where there was a list of required variances that the remonstrators thought were required. I went through all their variances and responded to that, provided that to you ahead of time, and be glad to go through that again. I just don't want to keep repeating myself with the boards if not necessary. But I'm, I'm here for questions. My clients are here for questions and try to be streamlined to give you guys direction as you request. Thank you.
I think the issue is, in ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash oh oh six, the, before us, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
Well, your ordinance is to, Bill, rezone four fifteen Lake Shore Drive from commercial C two to planned unit development.
I'm sorry. Yes, Bill, thank you. Ordinance to rezone four fifteen East Lake Shore Drive from commercial C two to planned unit development.
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Githens. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. West. Main council discussion. If not all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Same sign. Thank you. Special event permit.
If you put that on first reading, they'll pick it up by.
Oh, yeah, this is first reading, so.
Do, you gonna ask for a motion to suspend?
I will ask for a motion to suspend the rules. Bill, thank you very much.
And approve it on second and third reading?
Then is that your motion, sir?
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and approve it on second and third reading.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Githens moved to suspend the rules on second and third. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ham. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Same sign. Thank you. Special event permit.
Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Thank you.
We'll bring the special event permit at the next meeting.
Okay. Very good. Downtown landscaping award.
We solicited bids or quotes, I should say, for the maintenance of the downtown bump outs. This year, we've added the rain garden up by parking shop to that contract. We received three, my secretary gets my book. We received three quotes for that.
You're not violating any child labor laws, are you?
Probably. The low bid was Sellers Landscaping, and I'd like permission for a motion to approve five thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents.
Five fifty?
Five thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. That's for the calendar year of twenty-three, all maintenance to the bid.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve Sellers at five thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents?
It's moved.
It's so moved by Mr. West. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ham. Thank you very much. Any discussion?
What was it last year about?
I don't remember. We've added mums for the fall fest. It's for some extra color through there. So it really wouldn't be.
Apples and apples.
Apples and apples because we've added.
Because you've added the rain garden.
And the rain garden, correct, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve, disapprove by the same sign. Thank you. Our manager search. We met today with our Mr. Ripley, our current recruiter. Some substance, we've somewhat broadened the parameters of what we're looking for. To date, we've had no applicants have applied. But we're looking again at different places to advertise and so forth. So at this point in time, we really have nothing further to report on that. Rich?
I would make a motion that we increase our marketing budget from two thousand dollars to four thousand dollars to give Mitch Ripley the ability to do some of the things that were discussed earlier in terms of broadening the search to governmentjobs.com and whatever other applications he does. Sorry, it's a budget to draw on. It doesn't necessarily have to spend that money. That's two billion and second.
Seconded by Mr. Ham. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Same sign. Approved. Environment head reports. I know Jeff is left. Terry?
Yeah, two things. One, I just wanted to bring up, I know last week I got out a, they'll put out a feeler for the F B I C. They contacted us and we're interested in taking our, our ladder truck down there and putting it in. And I just need somebody to do it. I'm, I'm kind of honored that they picked our vehicle to do it. Hopefully, it just could.
Do you have any insurance?
We will have. They, they said yes, and they will have it in writing before they take our.
They, they will give us a binder to do it?
Yes.
For the binder is that they have the vehicle.
All times they're gonna have it, they're gonna take it in, they're gonna have it detailed, washed, and returned in fuel. And none of our manpower will be.
Have you done any more maintenance on the ladder?
Have we done?
They're not gonna raise it up and drop anything in?
No, I don't think so. I hope not. What they're doing actually is they're gonna take this down there for what I understand is, and they're gonna put it up against some of the other companies' trucks to show what it can do. And I think that it'll be a seller for that company. And hopefully, it'll be some perks back from us if maybe those who use those.
This is probably similar to what we, some of us went to, what, three, four years ago? Is it that big invention they had down there where they had trucks from everywhere?
Around the world, right?
Yeah.
It's an international company.
You don't know about it. It was quite informative and it was very worthwhile. So this will be a good P R for the town of Culver.
And if anybody, if anybody in the neighborhood would like to go, I can get tickets through them since our trucks there. Just let me know ahead of time.
What is that date again?
Steve, we're gonna take our truck on Wednesday the twenty-sixth, so it's the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth. Thursday, Friday, and a half a day Saturday.
Are you comfortable with our other equipment coverages and/or supplements from surrounding communities?
Uh, yeah.
I can't tell you when there's gonna be a fire. No, I, no, I know. If there's one requiring that type of equipment, does there limit or someone else we have a loose control agreement with?
That's gonna be my next line. But thank you for giving me that out of, out of meeting vote to do that. They needed it in advance.
I understand.
Terry, have you cleared this with the township, too?
No, I don't think that they'll, that Marlene will have any issue with it whatsoever. The vehicles more in line with our buildings anyway, which are community buildings. So when you think that we have rural, that we've been fighting for a hundred and three, hundreds of thirteen years, whatever it is, is not gonna be affected by that truck not being.
Well, you might want to check with her.
I, I will, I will come and talk to her, which I've been doing regularly since then.
I think she'll probably have the same concern as we did with the insurance coverage during that period of time. You know, hold us harmless and.
You gotta write it. Right, that's how we. I, I agree. That's what I told you right away, and then I just went to see if you guys were gonna. I wasn't gonna follow it and be part of that.
Okay, thank you.
The clerk treasurer, have you guys kind of approved something ahead of the meeting that needs to be ratified in this meeting?
Okay. Oh, then I make a motion that, subject to Terry getting a rider from the fire truck manufacturer, we allow them to take our ladder truck to Indianapolis from four twenty-six to four twenty-nine for the purpose of showing it off at a convention.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Githens, decided by Mr. West to approve the transport of the ladder truck to Indianapolis for the event. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Same sign. Thank you. Terry, when you get that waiver, we'd like Jim to take a look at. Okay.
They do, they do, it's not like.
Okay.
I'm sure that. They are. And my second one is, I've been going to meetings with all fire chiefs in the county. It sounds like, I guess with your permission also, that we're gonna be starting a mutual aid agreement with everybody that boundaries up against our fire district to have a mutual aid agreement which will, that are intact and ten help out with their I S O ratings with points towards insurance, lowering of insurance. So with your commission, we're gonna, we're gonna go on with that. Everyone who owned every board and asked any permission to do this guy to do this thing, because there's gonna be a little extra paperwork, there's gonna be things that have to happen to make these points come to our I S O, which makes us lower rate, which makes people happy and pay so much.
You get that. Bring it to us, Terry.
That's gonna be working time, not gonna happen fast. You know, a little bit of, I'll write an update if anything comes up that, that's not yet should be brought to the attention of the board.
Thank you very much.
Who's doing the mutual aid agreement?
We had a, we had a guy from the I S O come, tell us what we need to redo. So what's gonna happen is each department's gonna, we're gonna have our own, we're gonna work together as the fire chief and the John Rollick, which who's the head of our V F A, is on top of the two. He's part of that. So when this gets, when you get moved up, they will be accepted by a, and then if there's anything that in the writings evil, you know, legally, when we try to do this, trying to the right side, we've been trying to keep on kind of vague, depending who has rights and do what I S O wants us to do, it doesn't work. So there will be something in writing, and when that happens, it will all be handed to every attorney in the town. Everybody's gonna get those top and all. So that they.
They tried to do this in the past where the hangup is, is that Culver has one insurance carrier, and Plymouth's got a different insurance carrier, and Argus has a different insurance carrier. And all the insurance carriers wanna tweak the mutual aid language and.
I was, I was in on that.
That's where you run into problems.
Yeah, when, when they tried to, before I was in on it, we did a lot, a lot, sort of trying to get stuff going, they just kept.
It sounds like the I S O might be helping.
Right, he was telling us exactly what we need to do for them to be able to change our rating. If we can do what he's saying, then that'll, then it'll work. And it's not kind of vague. It, from what I'm getting, it's gonna be kind of a vague agreement. Like if we have a fire on this place, we're telling that fire department, and those guys are gonna respond with this, that, and this. Argus, you know, we're gonna use enough to go towards Plymouth in those, those areas that are our tax area and from this tax area, it's gonna be a mutual call. We're gonna be called the same time as them. So that's one thing that have to happen to make this work. So hopefully, if it works out, it'll be good for the community, if not, a waste of effort.
Thank you.
Wayne, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Do you have anything, sir?
Not really. I've just been working with Lake Fest and getting ready for the summer for, they'll be coming to you probably with the event thing. So other than that, I don't have anything right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amber?
I just want to give you a heads up. At the next meeting, I'll be presenting some quotes to reseal and reline the parking lot in the park. Since the beach lodge construction and the playground construction, nothing's really configured correctly. And then we have a hole that needs to be drilled and a speed bump that needs fixed. I received two quotes. I'm just waiting on one more, so I'll be presenting that at the next meeting. We are, I'm currently looking into fixing up the lighthouse. You might have noticed some divots and holes in it. Was originally just gonna get painted, but there's some structural things going on. So I am looking into it, and I'm kind of combining that work with repainting the Culver sign while they're down there. So no, it's in the works. It'll happen. I'll keep you posted as we sort of figure out those issues. The playground project, we're making a lot of progress with the weather right now. The main structure is being installed. We had the first slide go in today. So a lot of progress going on there. Final pieces just include the tables and chairs that need to be installed behind the train depot, which will be permanent structures. The playground permeable surface needs to be laid. Once the main playground structures are put in place, then the border will come in around the playground and then the sidewalk with the train depot over to the playground, and then last but not least, the landscaping. So hopefully, we keep seeing a lot of progress with the nice weather. We will be having also, we're doing a lot of spring touch-up. The beach lodge whole apartment area, there's that middle office there. I'm gonna have that, like, they're gonna, it hasn't been updated even with the construction, so we're gonna go ahead and pull up all those carpet staples, have it sanded and all repainted and nice right there in that middle office and hallway area. We had our Easter egg hunt this past weekend. It was a really successful event. We had about four hundred kids in attendance at that event, and every egg was picked up in four, like, five minutes. So a lot of work for five minutes, but it was a good time. This weekend, I'll be spending Saturday and Sunday with our new lifeguards, training them and getting them certified. We have about seven that need either certified or recertified. So this weekend and next weekend, we'll be spending our time in the pool. And then we have our orientation with our full staff on Sunday, May twenty-first. And gonna get everybody in and onboarded and trained in orientation with opening day approaching on May twenty-sixth. And then other than that, all of our pier spaces are officially full and all paid for for the summer, so all done there. My update.
Very good. Thank you very much, Amber.
Yeah, congratulations. That was a great, that Easter egg hunt.
Yeah.
Lot of positive feedback. Good job.
Thanks.
Utilities, Bob?
You've covered my one item already, unless you have questions for me.
I don't think anybody have questions for Bob. If not, I see our building commissioner in the back. Do you have anything, Steve?
Still learning, getting up to speed on all the activities. Good job.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the clerk's report.
It's over. Central, three thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty cents. If you have contractual services, that's the service that we have to back up all of our social media so that I can do, give a public access to that information. Culver and Lake Madison, we have to find out for five thousand dollars and probably bring it to them. Boylan, Humphrey, Cleveland, Joris, Rusey, eight thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-three cents for legal fees. Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, four thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents, and that's for the stewardage study update. Seller Services, three thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents for snow removal. And then another one for Baker Tilly, four thousand nine hundred, and that's for the water study update.
So I have a motion to approve claims over twenty-five hundred.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Ham, seconded by Mr. Githens. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Same sign. Passed.
Thing I have, Shannon Floe, who is our grant writer for several grants, but specifically right now for the Park Improvement Project. She contacted me regarding Thomas Excavating. They're doing all the work over there. They have been struggling and fighting to get their, their SAM number, which Assistant Rewards Management Number, which. which, um, they're trying to get it renewed and they're having issues. And this is not just on them. It's I've, I've seen several emails from folks across the state who are struggling to get this renewed. It's not an easy process. Um, and Shannon has been working with them originally, um, around the first of the year and into the, um, first couple of months, they submitted some invoices. I brought those invoices to you to say, can you approve these upon the SAM's note, SAM number? Um, I have, I have your authority to go ahead and just pay them, cut them the check, not have to wait for a council meeting. It's taken much longer than they anticipated. And so Shannon was asking if we would go ahead and release the money that is owed to them right now. Um, which is a hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and five dollars and sixty-eight cents. We do have the cash flow, so that's not, not an issue. Um, and she's continuing. I think, I think they found the issue and they're within sight of being able to issue that SAM, SAM number. Once that's done, then Shannon can go ahead and get funds released from OPA to get us reimbursed. Um, but I would ask that, uh, for a motion to release the payment of a hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and five dollars and sixty-eight cents for Thomas excavating payoffs three four five.
Do I have a motion to approve a claim of a hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred five dollars and sixty-eight cents per Thomas activating?
Same.
Has been moved by Mr. Sharty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ham. Any discussion?
Yes. If, if they don't get that SAM number, we're at risk for not being reimbursed for that.
Yes. But the other thing is they've already done that work. The sum isn't paid somewhere. My anticipate, I anticipate.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Passed.
Also, I mean, you all passed the salary ordinance and you set the, the police chiefs rate, but you passed, and right, so you passed a range for the, um, assistant chief and officers. However, you didn't stipulate what that raise was going to be. And so I'm holding up on payroll to find out what direction you want me to get with that raise. It's supposed to be equivalent to the chief of five dollars an hour or if it was different.
Council?
Understanding that it would apply across the board to, um, to the full-time officers and to the assistant chief, which, and the purpose for which was to allow, um, the chief to increase his recruiting efforts. Um, so I would, if we need a motion to, um, approve that five dollar an hour salary increase for the assistant chief and full-time officers and prospective fires, I would say move.
Mr. West made a motion. Is there a second? I second. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close, same sign. Thank you. Clarified?
Um, so we already approved the payment for the sewer updates. They have done those operating updates. I'm just finding, kind of find some time to talk with Jeff Brown, um, to, um, for him to review it with me and then possibly have him. Um, the Simart program, I divided the list of applicants for Simart program. I, if you want to refine, if you want to go ahead and review, um, and then we can finalize the awards next meeting. Um, I have twelve thousand dollars credited for the program and I have six applicants, um, which
One more to ask me questions.
And what I do do is if, if one drops out, then I'll go to the next person, but they can wait until next time.
Okay.
Um, just a reminder, hydrant flushers taking place this week, yesterday night. I don't see attendance. That's why your water is brown. It's not as well ordered. It's time to drink, just let it run. Um, garage sales are scheduled for April twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And if you want your sale listed, please get the information to me by Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. Um, kind of like cleanup, we've had a number of calls about that. I sent information out on time, I went late the other day. Um, but just to clarify, we're going to change up how we do cleanup day. You're not going to bring your junk to Bob. Bob is going to come and get your junk. Um, so all you're going to have to do is put your junk out on the curb over the weekend of May thirteenth and Bob and his guys will come by and pick it up on Monday, May fifteenth, but no hazardous waste, no fire. Um, couple more items. Uh, the cumulative capital development fund periodically, um, previously we would need to reestablish the tax rate for that fund as it would fall, um, over kind of usual, that every year to do that. Uh, but the state changed the rules and so once we reestablish it, it will say that tax rate for the rest of its life. Uh, but we need to do that and the deadline for that is May twenty-first. Um, it's kind of been on my radar, but today it was able to sit down and look at the dates. Um, so if you guys are okay with that, I will go ahead and submit a notice to the Culver City and then tomorrow. And then we'll have a public hearing at the May ninth meeting, um, and then adopt the resolution hopefully that evening. Um, we have to publish the adopted ordinance and then submit that to the Department of Local Government Finance by May thirty-first.
Okay.
So I did send it to our DLG F R A, just to make sure that the date's correct. If you all okay with that, I'm going to go ahead. I don't think it certainly needs a motion because you'll actually approve it or you'll have your say. In a So, and just last two things, um, just to keep me honest, um, I've got reporting deadlines. April thirteenth, there's a tip management report is due and that's almost completed. And then, uh, April thirtieth, the harbor funds report is due and that's the federal.
They're going to use Jamal yet?
Yeah. I hope they use that. It'll be easy. We're bound to. Yes. Which on that one, we'll be sending the letters out, um, in the next few days. If, uh, I'm going to be those east of Lake Shore and back in North Harris. West Terrace, Blue Parkway, over there on the water project. But that's all I have.
On the, the water and sewer rates, once you have a chance to meet with Jeff, if you're interested, we'll do a work session on that. Just
Yeah, I think we have a project presented, kind of like we did last time.
Yeah.
And then, um, from there, we'll have to have some discussions. Um, hopefully at that time too, we'll be close to having that complaint done and, um, have an idea. Projects that are kind of being coming down on us and almost permanent on our, what they have to do.
Turn around your report.
Uh, yes, again, just three quick things. Um, no action required, just updates. Beachview annexation, uh, the remonstrance period has expired. See no remonstrates, uh, remonstrators, uh, or petitions there too. Um, so we've, we're recording the annexation ordinance to take the property in. And we've submitted, uh, on behalf of the clerk, uh, copies of all of the ordinances to the, I don't know, eight or nine state and local agencies that are to get that information. So, uh, that process is about complete. And, uh, I know, Bob, you've been working a little bit with those folks down there about book of stuff. So uh, that is progressing and I think they're trying to, uh, move that along. At some kind of decent pace. In that same neighborhood, the, uh, Culver Neighbors for Responsible Development, uh, case against the town, the developers, that's still in a briefing period. We're still out at least thirty days. Not really to report. We've had to deal with a couple of access to public records requests that there's a public access counselor opinion that says if it's in litigation, you can't backdoor the discovery process by filing an access for public records. So my colleague is hot on that trail, just so all of you know. So see how that goes. Um, and then finally, um, for the infrastructure grant, there was a meeting today uh, between the grant people and the developer. And I think Shannon was involved in that. So she's kind of picked up a little bit to help make sure that we get the paperwork in and everything necessary to uh, you know, keep the grant going and, and help us out on a very significant subsidy for the infrastructure that's going to be needed in in that area. So, um, that's all I have. Anybody has any questions about any of those things, feel free to drop me a note, give me a call, whatever. I'd be happy to help you. And that's all I've got, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Next item is utility shot off ordinance violation. Anyone online? Hearing none. Anyone in the room? Hearing none? Citizen input? Anyone online? In the room? Council issues. Rich?
Um, just again, thank you, the Amber and the Park Staff for
Bill?
Uh, just wanted everybody to know they probably got their tax statement last over the weekend and, uh, don't be too shocked when you see some of the increases. And talking to people at the county today, all cities and towns, you know, that are taking a hit. My property is up forty-two percent. So, uh, you know, just beware that you do have an appeal process if you want to go through it. That's mainly the cities and towns, the people who live in the rural areas that didn't get much of a bite. So.
Thank you. Sally?
I don't have anything other than I didn't know four hundred kids could pick up that many eggs.
I have nothing. Bill?
I have nothing.
I hear a motion to adjourn the claims.
Same.
I'm, Mr. Guthan's moved. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.